A meeting to order?
No.
Join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the people of this land.
Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Mayor, time.
Here.
Alderwoman Dobbs.
Here.
Alderman Fahey.
She's here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Bennett. Alderman Bennett.
Yes.
Alderman Einmann.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Steiger.
Here.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you very much. This time, we'll move to approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion approved.
Okay. A motion and a second, all in favor. Any opposed? They don't believe we have any presentations or personal appearances tonight, so that'll take us down to city administrators' report.
You got my report at your seats. I did not get it put together in time for when the packets went out. A cover, a couple of items. One, Jokers is tentatively set to start on Tuesday, September 3rd, for the repaving and the stormwater improvements to go in on North Fourth Street. That's a section between Washington and the Capitol. So, once we get that completed, then that whole stretch should be nice and smooth, especially now the Highway Department's done 32. We should have a recommendation, item two, on the city website. We'll do that at the next meeting. We had a chance to be yesterday, kind of came up with some extra questions that we need to ask one of the developers, and then get those answered, and that should give us some direction as to what the committee, the group that the committee will recommend. Our feeling at this point is that we have two really good candidates. We aren't going to go wrong, anyway. It just depends on what we think the strengths are for the one that we want to recommend. And, final thing, item five, we're working out the details with McLineen Company, Gilmore and Bell, on the geo-bond issue ordinance. That's for the streets, and then the lease purchase ordinance for the water sewer improvements in the new subdivision. So, we've been looking at those, reviewing them. You'll have ordinances eventually coming to you to approve a variety of things, so that we can move forward with this proposed subdivision. That's all I have.
Happy back on subject one. I guess Copeland will be actively involved in monitoring that project.
We hired them for construction engineering, and they will be on top of that. All I got.
Wonderful. Thank you, Happy. Move to staff reports. First up, Steve Wilson with Alliance Water, who looks a little different tonight.
See, he's on vacation this week, and Cory was going to be here, until I found out it was his birthday, and decided that him grilling steaks with his family tonight was a better use of his time. So, happy birthday, Cory. Okay, so, a couple of items I want to call to your attention on the operations report. The lead and copper samples all came back, all were good, within regulatory limits. And those will be distributed to those property owners here in the next few days. The tank rehab work, done by USG at Point Base and Road Towers, that's all complete. On wastewater, there's a reference there to making repairs to a control panel. Eventually, we decided just to do a full unit replacement, so that's totally complete now, too. On the collections side of thing, there's a reference there to one of the pumps that Virginia Street Lift Station went down. We're obtaining quotes for that right now. We've got two, and the lowest is $6,200. So, we're still trying to get a third quote on that. And otherwise, on streets, all items were sold on Purple Wave. We'll be scheduling pickup. That is actually complete now. All items have been picked up. See, the walking trail, that project is complete. Kleisner did a great job, and we enjoyed working with them. Oh, the new bathroom. So, the site work is scheduled to begin Monday. We actually went ahead and moved the playground today, so we'll be ready to get started on that early Monday. And I will do the best I can to answer any questions you all have. I may have to get back with you, though.
Come on, someone.
Okay. Can't let you out, driven out of anything. Just like the copper sample thing, just, did have a little discussion about that and stuff, that, what actually happened there, and how are those results taken back to the homeowners?
So, that's something that we're required to do every three years. Every water system is required to collect lead and copper samples from a representative sample of their population. So, I want to say, in St. Genevieve's system, the case, it's maybe about 15 households that these are collected from, and we do have to rely on the homeowner to be cooperative and collect the water for us, return it to us. We take it to the lab, we receive the results, and then we turn around and turn the results over to the homeowner and submit them to the state. And again, all levels came back that they were within regulatory levels.
So, where do you actually take those samples from?
Well, the homeowner collects it from their faucet.
They give you a bottle, you go do it.
Thanks.
You good?
Thanks, Erica.
Next up, Chief Trump.
You have my report in front of you. Not a whole lot to really talk about or discuss. Staffing, we are currently full staff. We did hire a full-time employee this week, and then our employee that was out on sick leave with the injury was released to full duty on Wednesday and has returned to work. Other than that, not a whole lot to report on. We're still waiting on our installation of the last six digital radios to be 100% compliant for the digital switch-over come whenever dispatch is going to do it, so.
Questions? Schools operating without?
They have one. They're adding an additional this year.
Is that being funded all through the county, or is that?
It's all through the school, same as the current, correct. Thank you.
Thanks, chief. At this time, we will open things up to public comment.
I wanted to thank the mayor, and the city administrator, and all the aldermen, and all the women, for this opportunity. And I got two questions I'd like to address you. My name's Teddy Ross. I live 1145 Valley Springs Trail. And I've been here maybe 16 years. So, my first question is, on the proposition asked, when does the public see, like, the plan, or is how you guys are going to spend the money? Is that going to be soon? I know you're dealing with different things about this, and, so, anybody got any idea?
So, if you look at the agenda, we don't actually respond to these questions, but I can get back with you with that information.
Okay.
So, if you want to present your two questions, and I can, I'll catch up with you as to what we, what our plans are and how we're going to proceed.
Okay, so, both my questions are not going to be considered here?
No. I mean, they're considered, but we aren't going to, we don't, we don't.
You don't act on it?
Right.
Okay. Well, my other question is, Bill 4627. I think you're going to vote on that tonight. Is that right?
Which is? Yes, yes.
Okay. Now, this is going in to ask for funds from the Missouri Highway and Transportation Department. Is that correct? Well, I think that's what I read.
Yeah, the tap grant.
Okay. So, we're looking for funds to, on Highway 32, from Fourth Street out. What exactly are we looking for as funds for what? I mean, it paved and everything, but would sidewalks be a part of that? And when you go down 32? As access for people from downtown out to the shopping center?
You may answer this.
Yeah.
Okay, a whole lot easier. All right, so, the tap grant is for sidewalks from where it ends now on the east side of St. Joseph, goes down to Roja. That's what this is.
That's what this is about? Oh, good.
So, what you see out on M Highway is the, is the Highway Department has contracted with PACE to replace the sidewalks from Valley Springs all the way up to Highway 61. So, they are redoing all of those.
Right.
To make them handicap accessible, and make them accessible to the intersections. And they're going to carry that all the way up. Then they will dedicate those to the city, and those will be our responsibility after that.
Okay. So, we're planning with this bill to extend that sidewalk on down to, where we take, with that 32 end, or?
We would go to Roja, because we have two sidewalks there, sidewalks on each side of the street. So, what we want to do is get people off the road on that side, because everybody walks on that side, and then hits the sidewalks to go across the bridge. We want to get that sidewalk, so that there's sidewalks a whole way from, you can, you can come up, you know, starting at 61, you can walk all the way downtown without getting all the street, except for.
That's, that's a good idea. Now, I guess the other thing would be, like, pedestrian crossings? I don't know, do we have a liaison with MoDOT, or anybody to talk to about maybe get a pedestrian crossing there at Progress and M?
So, that's part of that project.
Pedestrian crossings?
But it, so, it depends on your definition of pedestrian crossing. If it'd be, if they put one in, if I remember right, it's going to look like the one that's at the park. So, it's just striping. There's no lights. It's not a lighted intersection with the pedestrian and signals and that. It's.
Okay, isn't that like over by the hospital, where they got, that signs up and stripes and?
And they might do, I don't know, I don't think the signs, the sign might be.
It runs by solar, too, that one over there. I guess it lights up at night?
Yeah, it'd be more like the one that's at the park now, that comes, comes across the street.
Well, the people here are not really stopping for pedestrians. And I've seen kids run across the street, because the cars don't even slow down. So, I think there has to be more visibility, or something, at these pedestrian crossings. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Any other public comment at this time? If not, we'll move on to tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, we'll have a public hearing. A public hearing will be held to give citizens an opportunity to comment on the property tax rates proposed to be set by the city of St. Genevieve, a political subdivision. Tax rates shall be set to produce revenues, which the budget for the fiscal year 2025 shows to be required from the property. We will open that public hearing at 6:14. Just one of the rules. Yeah. Okay, at this time, I mean, I guess at this point, we're looking at.
So, this is, using the proposed tax rate, it was recommended from the city.
Right, okay.
Over yet currently.
Okay. So. So, these are all tax rates. So, we're looking at tax rate for 2023 per $100 of assessed valuation. In 2023, the tax rate, general revenue, was .4812. Cemetery was .0480. Band was .0773. Park and Recreation was .1251. Public Safety was .2684. This all came out to a 1.0 flat. Proposed tax rates for 2024 per $100 assessed valuation is general revenue .4823. Cemetery .0481. Band .0775. Park and Recreation .1254. And Public Safety .2690. This all comes to a total of 1.0023. Very slight increase there. Questions, comments? If not, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:16. Okay. So, it'll take us to old business. This is a second reading of Bill number 4627. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a Missouri highways and transportation commission transportation enhancement funds program agreement for public improvements along South Fourth Street, Highway 32. Tap dash 9901879.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, motion and a second. Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Einmann.
Yes.
Alderman Bennett.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Fahey.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dobbs.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero noes. Bill number 4627 now becomes ordinance 4548.
Thank you. Take us down to some new business. We have the approval and certification of election results from the August 6, 2024 primary election. Would you approve? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Take us to a first reading of Bill number 4628. This is an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve levying a tax on the residents of the city for the year 2024. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll make a motion for a second reading of Bill 4628.
Second.
Discussion, do we need a second reading on this?
Yes.
Before September 3rd.
Yeah.
We have one on that's from September 12th.
It's every year, because they, we get it too.
Delayed from.
Sorry. No control.
Okay, so, I believe we do have a motion and a second for a second reading of Bill number 4628. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this will be a second reading of Bill number 4628. This is an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve levying a tax on the residents of the city for the year 2024.
Motion to approve. Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Alderwoman Dobbs.
Yes.
Alderman Fahey.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Bennett.
Yes.
Alderman Einmann. Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero noes. Bill number 4628 now becomes ordinance 4549.
Thank you. We'll take us to a first reading of Bill number 4629. This is an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain officials.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Lastly, we'll have a first reading of Bill number 4630. This is an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, amending the personnel manual set forth below.
Would you approve?
Can I ask one question about that bill? What is the stipend amount?
$50.
A month?
As long as your bill is $50 or more.
Okay. Do you need a second? I'm sorry. No, a second.
Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any other business to bring forth at this time?
I need to make a motion and a motion. Trump will close it again.
Sure. And if you do see at the, at the end of your agenda as well, there is an option to close this meeting. For this portion of the meeting, an apology.
That's, I think, at my request?
Yeah, at the request of council.
Purposes discussing property and litigation.
I'll make a motion.
No, second then.
Okay, so, I have a motion and a second. Pam, would you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Bennett.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Fahey.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dobbs, yes. Alderman Einmann.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Motion carries. 622.
Okay, this time, we'll call tonight's work session to order, and I'm looking for approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second in favor? Any opposed? Okay, with that, we'll move on to the one and only item, budget.
All right, so, we are up to, what I thought was going to be draft two, we're up to draft three, because there were some changes that I could make prior to tonight's meeting, so I wanted to differentiate where we were in this process. In your hands, at your table, at your desk, you have this, the main spreadsheet. Also, you'll have the capital projects, capital items, that, that paper, which is to, whether you approve or disapprove an item that has been requested. And then you also have a complete copy of the budget, line items. So, quickly going over what was requested last time, we had a number of items. One was to insert a 2% COLA addition to the step raise for wages and salaries. We were asked to reallocate ARPA funding for the police departments' portable radios for their digital use. That system probably isn't going to go on the air until end of 2025, but still, we'll get it done now. Reduce the attorney's fees in the judicial department by $5,000. Added back in $24,000 for part-time fire chief, working 18 hours per week. That was based on the amount coming down from $32,000 for 24 hours a week. And then we added in from that, $8,000 in tourism marketing in the general fund for the tourism director, so he has a discretionary amount for, whatever he feels he needs to advertise for. So, we've also, as I said earlier, we've been looking at the geo, the geo-bond funding, the lease purchase amounts. So, with the geo-bond, the way it's set up is that we will not start collecting that until, for us, it'll be fiscal year 2026, because it will not be put on this year's taxes. It will not, it will be added in next year. So, for this year, to make the payment, we don't have to come up with a full amount of $100,000 in the general fund, $350,000 in streets, and $150,000 in capital improvements. So, with that, we can remove the $100,000 transfer out of general fund. So, with that, it puts us at a 44% rate of reserves, as opposed to before, which was just barely skimming under 40%. So, that saves us from having to worry about transferring the money in. Still, we need to pass an ordinance that says we can reduce the reserve amount down to 40%, so that we're not in violation of our own, of our own code. But, with that, the payment is estimated to be $442,000 for 2025. And then, again, we can cover that from street and capital improvement. Then you're looking at anywhere from $600,000 to $656,000 for fiscal year 2026. And that's when it all kicks into gear. So, we'll have money, it just isn't that we're paying for it yet. And we don't have the, that revenue source coming in for that fiscal year. So, we'll, again, continue to be short about 6% in the general fund, and we'll bring forth the 40%. So, we'll do the 40%, we'll do the revisions for the current fiscal year, and then we'd have the current budget year. So, you'd have three items to pass, once at each September meeting. So, same thing we've done every year. Any questions, real fast, about the spreadsheet or anything? All right, so, for tonight, since we are talking budget, we discussed, and because of the discussion, a couple of discussions, actually, that we've had, we have two folks that want to make presentations to the board. We talked about the Chamber of Commerce payment that we make, it's $6,000 every year, in addition to our, our membership fee. And then Commissioner Razika is here to talk about South Fourth Street Bridge. So, he's got his ask, and then Dina can explain her part, so.
It was asked through the K, wasn't it?
Yes, I'm sorry. Nina, do you want to start us off? You want to start off talking about Chamber?
Oh, Bethany, yes.
Okay, all right. All right, whoever wants to do that, come on up.
Yeah. Hello. Thanks for letting me come here tonight and talk to you guys. My name is Bethany Tomir, and I'm here on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. On the, the last work session, I think the question was asked, where does the funding go that you guys provide to the Chamber? So, by the end of this, I'm hoping that we all have a better answer for that. I'd first off like to say thank you to the city for continued support of the Chamber of Commerce throughout the last 20-plus years. It has been a great partnership. We'd like to see this continue. You may be asking, where, what is the Chamber doing for us, the city? To which I reply, everything we do is for St. Genevieve's businesses and patronage members in mind. The Chamber is the organization for the businesses that do support this community. In the interest of saving some time, I will read from a bullet point list, of which any of those topics may be elaborated in depth if needed. We support business support and advocacy within St. Genevieve. We provide resources and assistance for local businesses. We advocate for policies that benefit the business community, most recently, the advertisement and advocacy behind the Prop S. Tourism. While we have a much-needed tourism director currently. Should I wait, or?
No.
No, okay.
No, it's something to look.
Okay. While we have a much-needed tourism.
You go ahead.
Okay. Tourism. While we have a much-needed tourism director currently, there was a time, recent enough, while I was serving on the board, where the city had a vacancy. During that vacancy, Dina was able to field calls, assist the city, whenever you called, and ask for her multiple decades' worth of experience. We provide support for networking opportunities. We organize events and meetings that facilitate networking among the local businesses. Host mixers, luncheons, and workshops to foster collaboration. Community events. Plans and execute, we plan and execute community events that attract visitors and enhance local culture. Some of which, summer and winter music series, which I will add, the Chamber promotes these events with. events with no monetary gain. The funds are set aside to be able to give back to our community. Serving the community with the Eclipse event that was an economical boost for St. Genevieve, bringing in thousands of spectators. The city asked for our support in the event. We agreed. While the tourism director did have plans in place, he was unable to make the day of the event, and Dina stepped in to run the event for both the city and the chamber, working a fourteen-hour shift to make sure our city and the event came first. We promote festivals, parades, and markets that boost local commerce. The annual gala, which I have seen several of you attend, is the only business networking event in our area that is used solely to promote our businesses and business individuals dedicating themselves to making our community better for all. Marketing and promotion. We promote St. Genevieve as a destination for tourism and business investment. We maintain an online presence to showcase lists, local businesses, and events. We host ribbon cuttings for businesses that are just joining us. Economic development initiatives. We collaborate with local government and organizations to improve infrastructure and business climate, most recently to name a large cooperation effort with the IDC, the Housing Development on Progress Parkway. We engage in strategic planning to identify economic opportunities. During the, watching the last video, I listened to Joe explain the reason for the start of the six thousand dollars funds that were allotted to the chamber in 2000. Since then, I ask, who has filled this role for the city? Was an additional employee hired? I believe I can answer that question confidently as a yes for the impossible salary of six thousand dollars a year for an additional twenty-five business persons, twelve on the chamber, twelve on the IDC, and Dina. Education and training. We work directly with the schools to promote the trades and entrepreneurial opportunities. Community development. Work, we work on projects that enhance the quality of life in St. Genevieve, making it an attractive place to live and work. We partner with local organizations to support workforce development. Keeping the license office within St. Genevieve and owned by its own community, the license office was closed for business in May of 2020. The St. Genevieve city and county leaders approached our board with the idea for the chamber to bid over, bid and take over the business, to keep a valuable service and jobs located within its city limits. Thankfully, we were awarded the contract, starting in January of 2021. The chamber was the only entity to bid on owning the license office that was even located in the state of Missouri. I will also add that we have many customers to this day that come from other counties, even as far as St. Louis, to do business with our license office as they prefer working with our staff. Since the license office has been taken over by the chamber, we're bound by our contract to use all monetary gains to give back to the community, and we've held true. The foundation money is set aside and used for only community enhancement programs and scholarships. May I be so bold to ask, if an individual owned this business, would the money be contributed back to our community, even our state? Vital funding. The city's annual contribution of six thousand dollars is crucial for the chamber's nonprofit budget, allowing us to sustain operations and staff support, fund community projects and events, and continue advocacy efforts and provide essential services to local businesses. To echo my earlier comment, the chamber's pride is our city, and we do everything in our power to provide aid to St. Genevieve. To what cost? The Chamber of Commerce, most of the time, is operated by one paid employee and a board of volunteers. While we come together and believe in supporting our city, we cannot sustain solely of volunteer hours and work. The six thousand dollar budget we receive from the city helps us structure our employees' time and salary to include the continued and much-needed economic development in St. Genevieve, as well as all the phone calls, liaison meetings, and extra events that we help facilitate. A comment from me personally, three years ago, I was approached to join the Chamber of Commerce board. Like many of you, I also questioned, what is their purpose? What is their benefit in the community? To be completely honest, I only said yes because I didn't think I'd get voted in. Funny thing is, here I stand before you, three years later, proud to be the hundredth president of the Chamber of Commerce for St. Genevieve. I believed in this organization so much that I became involved, and I haven't looked back since. In closing, I urge you to consider the continued support of funds after hearing just a fraction of the information that we provided here tonight. And I hope I have answered your question of what is the Chamber of Commerce doing for us. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Bethany. Thank you. Thank you, Dina, too.
Okay. Bring your ass.
Good luck, Paul. My ass.
Well, good evening, everybody. In case you don't know, I'm Randy Razika, Presiding Commissioner, St. Genevieve County. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you on the passage of Prop S. It's going to mean some great things for the region, and we're real happy about that. I kind of wanted to touch base, and there is an ask in there. So as most of you probably know, it was about two and a half years ago, we got what was called the Flap Grant to replace the bridge right out here, which is Federal Lands Access Program. That has been progressing. We're in the engineering stages. We're getting closer, and that project is slated to start in 2025. So the caveat here is, that was supposed to be a hundred percent grant for the total cost of the bridge. Well, when all of that was figured at the beginning of the grant, that was almost three years ago. So we all know what, how much more expensive everything has gotten. So in speaking with Smith and Company, it looks like it's going to exceed what our original cost estimate was. Inasmuch as you've got Proposition S, I was hoping that maybe if I came to the city and asked for some help for part of it, you would be willing to chip in, like maybe for some sidewalks or something like that. Because the scope of the bridge is that it will have ADA accessible sidewalks on both sides. That runs the cost of it up considerably. Inasmuch as the grant, it has to be built exactly as it was structured in the grant. So it's no secret of the budget problems we're having, and I, believe me, I understand what you all are going through because it's, it's no picnic. That was always my least favorite time was what you're going through right here. But we're in a bad way with the sales tax, just a lot of things. And then with the cost overruns, I was just hoping that you could consider maybe using some of the money that you got with the Prop S to help with part of that, you know? We would be covering the lion's share of it. So, and even though it's slated to start in 2025, my guess is it probably won't be completed until later in the year. We're probably looking at like a year from now. And there's progress payments along the way. So if you could just look in the, in your scheme of things and see if there was any way you could help us on it, it's just an, that's, that's my only ask, is that you would think about and see if there's any way you could help us on it. And if you have any questions, or if any of you ever wants to come into the office and we can go over the whole thing, that would be, that would be great. Okay? So that's all I have. So anybody got any questions? Yes.
Randy, what about process? Like, you talked about an estimate, and then it's plain for everybody to see you're right, that when you get an estimate and you sit on that, then cost is going to go up. Is there any process to get like a firm price quote?
Now, well, you do, but the problem is grants are wonderful, but grants take years to implement.
Right.
We have to go by, when the grants put out, we go by their process. So, you know, you have to go through all of the proposal and the engineering and everything else. And I'm, everybody knows that things end up costing more over time, but we've been through an extraordinary period here in the last three years. That's, that's no secret to anybody how much everything has gone up. So at this point, it, we're still looking at ways that maybe we can shave a little bit of the price off, but the initial cost estimate was about, was like seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the last time I talked to Smith and Company, he was saying we're looking at like nine hundred thousand. So.
Can we negotiate that at all?
And again, he's still working on it. I mean, you know, there were some.
Well, it's not going to go down.
No, it's not going to go down. It's not going to go down. And we're going to move on regardless. I mean, it's, it's going to happen, and it's, that bridge has needed to be replaced for as long as I can remember. So I mean, that's all good. But I'm just asking that maybe down the road, I may come to you with, with a dollar figure to see if you can, I'm just trying to open the door here, just to see if y'all would consider, you know? Because I know when I was with, on the city board, we always talked about that, and there was just, there was no way we were ever going to, and at that time, it was three hundred thousand or something to do that bridge ten, fifteen years ago. Well, now it's, you know, price of steel, everything, labor, all. So that's all I have, you know? Yeah, Bob?
Seven. One, these numbers you're talking about, this is just the engineer's estimate. We haven't actually.
Correct, correct.
So this would be more or less?
It could be more, it could be less.
Right.
I don't see anything going down.
Right.
But, you know, we'll see.
You know, another thing comes to mind, I guess there wasn't a contingency built into his estimate at all.
And, and it was also that at the time, there was a cap, even though it was supposedly a hundred percent ride, but it was not to exceed certain amount. So we had, even if, even if in the beginning they had said that, it wouldn't have really changed anything where we are right now. It's just, it's just, we're all victim of inflation and, you know, just.
The last thing, you know, I had is these ADA sidewalks. How did this come into it? And did the engineer not anticipate?
Oh, no, it was, it was all figured into it. It's just simply that everything costs more now.
Right.
You know, there were some things on it that were, the initial drawings were beautiful as far as decorative railings and decorative lighting and all that. Well, that's gotten trimmed off because obviously that's not essential to the function of the bridge. It would have been great if we could have built it the way they drew it, you know? So, you know, we're trying, you know, it's going to happen, but we're, we're just trying to shave costs, and we'll see where, we'll see where we end up, you know?
So do we have any anticipated costs? I mean, when you take that bridge out, and if it's unusable for many months, we're going to have to have plans to get it out.
That's part of.
Other.
Yeah, I mean, that's, and that's not, there's going to be real pleasant when that happens. And, and we haven't gotten there yet, but my hope, and I don't know the whole timeframe, how long it's going to take, but it would be great if a bulk of it could be done on, during the summer when the kids aren't in school and, you know, because that's a major, major thoroughfare there. But, you know, arrangements will have to be made, and it's just like any roadwork, it's going to be inconvenient when it's happening, but in the end, we're going to have a great bridge. So.
When that bridge is built, then any signage, alternate route, blockage things, that would all be.
Oh, that'll, that'll all be handled. Yeah, yeah, that'll all be handled because we're doing this through MoDOT, so everything is to their standards.
Right.
You know?
There will be a page included with the plans that says, here's how you're going to redirect traffic.
Exactly, yeah.
I know there was also a question about from eighty feet originally to a ninety-foot span.
It's gotten longer. That, that's another thing that happened. And that has to do with when they did their core samples and the seismic stuff that, you know, every year the rules get stricter. They want, they want a longer span on the footings to get into more solid ground, so we don't end up with what happened in St. Mary's at the Franklin Bridge where it just starts pushing into the creek, you know? So, yeah.
Is special relevant in tribute?
Well, I mean, they're part of us essentially. So, yeah, but we're, we're all in this together. Yeah.
They have provided some funding for some.
Right, right.
I remember.
So as we get closer to this, you know, there'll be more.
The other ones that built that bridge to begin.
Right.
There's a plaque on there.
Yeah, you're right.
There's a plaque on it.
My early thirties, like nineteen thirty-four or something like that.
It was dedicated by the special workers.
Yeah, okay. So anyway, that's all I had. Appreciate your time, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so you have in front of you what would be the drafted budget that we would bring before you in September. Included with that, on the capital items and project requests, the amount for the chamber has been included with the recommended area. So you see what we've, what we've included there, what we've moved around, but we're still, again, within that range that if we drop our capital reserve requirement in good shape, and then all the capital items in the water sewer were already approved and were in decent shape there already. Questions?
Huh?
Question? Are you texting it to me?
No.
I don't have my phone. I won't hear it.
I know, once we pass a budget, things start to take place and stuff, but as a little precautionary measure, and you may have this figured in already, any of these major expenses and stuff, I mean, would it be wise to hold off on some of those as long as we can, just in the event, say, six months or four months or something, just to see if, you know, our revenue is holding out as anticipated or?
Are you talking on the public works or the dedicated part of it, or the general fund part of it?
Well, probably maybe both and stuff, but, you know, looking down here, street's just part of eight thousand dollar new pickup. I mean, that was just one example. Do we have to buy that day one of the budget, or can we wait?
We don't have to because the way things are set now, you know, it takes a longer period of time to get equipment than it used to. The thing is, though, on the, on the enterprise fund, except for the water fund and the dedicated funds, we're fine on those. It's general fund that we have some restrictions. So on general fund, like the SGTV payment is quarterly, so that isn't immediate. The website is ARPA Money, which is already in there. That'll probably come about. Final payment on that would be February, the way we were working out in our schedule at this point. The SUVs, we have payments already scheduled on those, so those are regular payment. Sue, when do those payments come due for the SUVs?
October and March.
Yeah, because usually it's principal and interest.
But that's the, we already have.
Right, right. But we, but that's the payment that we have to make. And in the marketing plan, we are in the process of, of working in, getting that approved, bring it, or getting it, getting a company approved to bring to the board to approve, probably at the next meeting or the meeting after that. So I think with the general fund, there isn't really a lot we can hold off on there. On the other funds, yeah, we can, we can push those back. But those funds, I think, are in, in a little better shape than what the general fund is, except for water.
No, because as we drop that, you know, what, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus, you know, we've kind of lost our cushion in the event of our tax revenue changes.
Right. Yeah, probably a lot more no's this year than in past years from, from our department. Okay, we're going to move forward with what we have in our hands. No more, don't need to meet anymore. I won't drag you out on another Thursday.
Yeah. Okay, I was getting used to this.
Well, you'll still get work sessions. No more tacos. All right, okay.
Thanks to all that came and discussed with us. Anything else at this time? At that, we will adjourn.